Correct, a correction, they had two hundred two rooms a year for their year and that was it on the corrections. And I'm gonna ask that, I'll need a motion in a second to approve a June second regular scheduled meeting and a June ninth executive.
That might be a second. Okay. We got some ladies here tonight. We got some, yeah, we got three of them, Reese's Across America. It's all yours.
My name is Sterling Rose. I'm a member of the chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution. I have thought with me to not to hold hearts in crime. Gina Whitaker, Gina is a teacher at Virginia High in Northwest Hendrix, Travis, and Linda Osborne, Linda is from Avon and she just recently had knee surgery.
So I apologize for my dress. I cannot cancel yet. So sorry.
You want to say anything else? Thank you very much for having us tonight. You may recognize Daughters of the American Revolution because of the banners that you have put in the town for a few years. And Rhonda Beck is a member of our chapter also. I'm going to start with just a little bit of the history. Reese Across America was started in Harrington, Maine in nineteen ninety-two and it was started by a gentleman named Merrill Warchester or Worster. And he was a wreath maker and he found himself with a surplus of over five thousand wreaths that year. And he saw the opportunity to pay tribute to the veterans then in Arlington Cemetery, America's finest. And with the help of Senator Olympia Snow and she's, she's, isn't she, did she just retire? She's still in Olympia? I think she's still in this. I, I know Collins is, I, I, I'm not sure on that Senator Snow, but anyway. She and Mr. Worster or Warchester arranged for the wreath to be placed at Arlington. And the annual tribute is now in its thirty-fifth year. Its mission is remember the fallen, honor those who serve, and teach the next generation the value of freedom. The latest figures I could get were in, were from two thousand twenty-two. And Reese Across America placed two point seven million veterans wreaths in thirty-seven hundred locations in the United States, all fifty states, a couple at sea and then abroad. Arlington itself had sixty-eight tractor trailers go in there and they delivered two hundred and fifty-seven thousand wreaths. The theme for two thousand twenty-three, that's the first year we did Reese Across America here in Hendrix County. Used to everything went to Crown Hill in Indianapolis. But the, the thing, the theme for two thousand twenty-three was serve and succeed. And then last year's was live with purpose and this year's is keep moving forward. And some of the cemeteries, and if I forget anyone, you know, they will. Some of the cemeteries, well, the first year we had Center Valley Cemetery, which is on thirty-nine, just north of Interstate seventy. And we had New Winchester up here. We had Brownsburg, which was a large one. And then Green Lawn, which is right across the street from Brownsburg Cemetery. Last year, we did Fairview at North Salem. Gossip at Avon. We did Maple Hill Cemetery, but we did, I wanted, there was another one we did last year, but I can't think of which one it was. Gina, what did you do last year? Oh, Danville, the two.
One behind the town hall.
Yeah, Town Hall and Danville, right. Yes, Danville East. This year we chose to, well, last year when we did Plainfield's Maple Hill. We started it in November because we would have lost four hundred and fifty-two wreaths had we not, so. That wasn't a problem and we're finishing it this year then. I will, and we will have a formal ceremony. I'm here tonight along with Linda and Gina to inform you about the ceremony. I know you've had an interest in possibly doing the eight wreaths at the Veterans Memorial there in the center, which is fine with National. And, or you could do the regular ceremony and Gina, I'll let her take over now. Because she is the one who has done the work here in Coatesville. Gina?
I started with a list of everyone in the cemetery and I went from A to Z and I researched everyone. Man, female, I mean, everything. The only ones I crossed off was anybody that was sports in the random. Because I thought even back in the store, they could have been fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eleven. And we located, we have researched the death certificates, you know, the visuaries. We have found two hundred and one.
Ten more.
One number one, but we'll be ready. And one unconfirmed. I still don't see anyone on that. Following that process, then I tracked down through ancestry and find the grave and white pages, just about anything I could find out there. And we have, if there were descendants, we have contacted every someone. So it's, it's pretty thorough, it's been pretty thorough.
Okay, so that would make with, with the two oh one, I mean, that's, that's everybody that's, we had, as of the end of February.
I've been working with Karen on recent ones. I lost my dad in February, so I met her. And explained what Reese Across America was and she said she would work with me on anyone who's from February to the ceremony. There's a veteran with this place in today.
The person has to be a six, yes, honorable, yes, justice. The, the one that you don't have is Chuck Coffee and I can call Ralph Mantis and ask him, because that's our, our Linda Coffee Mantis. But do, do you remember Chuck? Do you know if he was a veteran? Do you remember that?
It was listed on Find the Grave as a veteran. If he went to his death certificate, it's not my fault. So it could be clerical, but we, we don't know.
But I, I can call Ralph and Linda. That, that's on. You can't, okay. So that would be.
That would be the two oh one. That would be, that would be two of that.
So really, we just, we wanted to tell you about our program. You do have the option, because I did check, check with National Headquarters and they do have such a program. So you could do the full two hundred and one, two hundred and two, whatever it will be, and then the, or you could do the ceremony that Jerry and I talked about. And you don't have to decide tonight if you would rather talk amongst yourselves and then contact us, that's fine. Linda, did you want to?
If we do the two hundred wreaths, we just need to know because we have to do a fundraiser to make sure we get enough money each wreath to donate and we get seventeen dollars a wreath. Anybody can donate, doesn't matter if you're a family member, just a good citizen, whatever. If you don't want to do that and just do the eight wreaths, that is okay. We can get, we can take care of that, but just to let you know. And if you do the, the wreath on each one, then we want to make sure we have the volunteers and we can all have volunteers come out. The ceremony takes fifteen minutes, give or take, and then just put a wreath on each one of them. We'll do that.
And you're going to do this in December?
Yes.
Well, when I visited the cemetery, my husband and I, it was in the winter in the snow.
The date is for everybody that does Reese Across America to do it on the second Saturday in November, which is the
December thirteenth.
Thirteenth this year and it's supposed to be at noon so that everybody is keeping informed across the United States. Once in a while you'll find one that might have to do it on the day before, the Friday before, because they'll, they, with the cemeteries and National was okay with that as well.
We just have to notify them.
Yeah, we just have to notify.
You'll read in the paper that Milk Creek, which is west of Danville, will be on the fifteenth, the fourteenth on a Sunday. But the others like at Maple Hill and Plainfield, we're still working on Walnut Grove, south of Stylesville. It has six veterans in it and we're, we're still deciding how we want to do it.
I will say you have one descendant coming as far as I'm sorry. That's the furthest these can come.
Anybody have anything else?
So we need to let you know.
Just let. Which, if you want it, which way you would like to do it. Yeah, either way, we'll, we'll work with.
What do most do?
As far as.
As a wreath.
Well, most of them have the full ceremony. Yeah, the, like last year, as I said, Plainfield didn't because we were so late in just getting it together, maybe, but it went well.
Gossip did not have a full ceremony because there was only six of them there. But we still had our own ceremony. We just didn't have the field, uh, fieldler and the singing of the anthem, the national anthem. But we were very respectful and we put the wreath on each grave and we put our hand on our, send their name. And we do that for everybody, one, one address down. And we had lots of kids, lots of young people that volunteered. Swinteen was one here and Deca and also Boy Scouts.
The chance of us missing anybody.
She's done a very thorough job. We can't.
Send you guys the list of the names, the, the name, the branch served, the level of service that they performed and then what.
It's.
Squarely served.
That was the only thing that I ever worried about.
Well, we talked about putting in the Republican and like Coatesville Chatter and Hereby's Lake Chatter and all of those things. A notice in there of if you haven't made contact with by someone from V A R that has a veteran in Coatesville Cemetery, please reach out. Because I reached out to everybody that is on my list. So in the event there was one or two. We, we were thinking of all the ways to bring you out.
Well, that's something that never thought about. We have another cemetery over here, Avon over here in Norwood.
What we did, like Plainfield, well, I think Avon, maybe Avon's a better example. Avon has several small ones like Gossip, so we did Gossip and then we tried it. What our goal is to at least to put a wreath if we can on every veteran's grave. That's our goal. In Hendrix County, right. And we, we just, but we just cannot do, it'd be fifteen thousand veterans probably. In the smaller counties like one of the, our, our, the, our, has Rensselaer. And that she does those, but, and, and they do have help, the, the Boy Scouts do help there also. So.
When we did New Winchester, we had quite a few people come and say, you know, my relative is in ex cemetery. Who's she thinking about putting that on the list? And we had quite a few conversations, both at the end of New Winchester. As to which one people want to mess because they have someone. So other ones in town can be picked up next year. We can, you know, incidentally, we're doing one walk away. For a little bit of all of Hendrix County.
Well, they don't have any, we have over there. It's closed. Then we have. Oh, I don't want to go with the other. We have one at Seven. But it's been destroyed, so.
Now, if you know the landowner, that's why I have to think, I go in and I restore them and I reset the stones and I fix them. And when I walk away, it looks like it did.
When I talk to Glenn, stop now. His big concern was, okay, you got the stone, but I don't know where they go.
If the stones are where they fell.
No.
Okay, then we can, we can do a couple of things. You can be the line along the side and then become an honorary type location.
And they are in somebody's yard. Now, I don't know where the property lines go there. I couldn't tell you. They may not be in their yard. It may still be. But they were in good shape a few years ago when I went over to find out about them, but then somebody tried to throw them in a pile and get them out of the way. Anyway, but this one over here, I, I, I'm surprised. All right.
Okay, well, let, let us know.
We'll do that.
Come to the, my other hat now is the fair.
And really, if you guys do want me to look at that cemetery, I will be one of the, I do it volunteer.
What is the actual name of that cemetery? I don't know if it does.
Because it's included the court of hurt, the annex.
Yeah, I've got them in back here. I think this, the cemetery down here, that seven, that was part of an old Baptist church. And since then, that church sold all their property away. And then that cemetery was just part of it. I don't know how anything happened after that.
State law is. They're supposed to have a filing because it is.
I have West Branch Friends Cemetery.
That's a Mormon cemetery, I think. Morgan Mills down here. It's in, it's in.
Maston. Which one is that, Jerry? You know, you've been looking at that.
Right there, Morgan Cemetery.
Okay.
Two and a half weeks ago.
Four and a half weeks? No.
Yeah, looks great. I know. I am bound and determined to get back. The first ten, eleven days was full.
Okay, that one over there is West Branch Friends Cemetery. West Branch Friends.
I'll get started on that one. Then we can always put it in the to do later file and it's real work's done, so. The other one was Mormon Cemetery.
Yeah, that's M O R A V I N.
More than.
There's one in somebody's yard up here in town that I found. There's like three in it. And I reached out to them and they didn't call me or family back, so.
This is, some people know was Roy Cook's house. The reason I brought it up was I thought they're both deceased, I think. Anyway, house has been turned over and I just thought whoever gets the house, all we know, that's in the backyard.
Ask the beach, it has to be on the beach. Say the red letters.
All right. Thank you, thank you.
I just got a hovel. Thank you so much.
Have a good day. All right.
By the way, Chris is on there.
Chris is on, he didn't want to hear the other. I'll go quick, a couple of things. Dr. Ken Smith, the Sir Grant would be August twentieth. That's when they'll give it and Amy says right now it looks very good. The paving has changed. The paving now will be January twenty-sixth. And it went from twenty-five percent match to twenty percent.
Yes, I seen.
And so.
Now, the paint on January twenty-sixth, what, what the, that's when the paving, that's when the grant goes out?
Yep.
Okay.
So it changed and then it went to twenty.
Now, what we plan on doing, we want the fire department, the.
Fire department in that parking lot in the cemetery.
That'll be done probably in spring.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Is that all right?
Well, heck yeah.
So the other thing, and I State Road seventy-five on the caution signs, that is being worked on right now and it will be solid, but it's still in the state. Little bit of news is the new hardware. It will be two weeks now before they open. They have to put in a sidewalk on the north end for the emergency exit. So, and they're going to work on that as soon as they can get started, so. That will be. We do, do have the town park. We're going to put a new building there, but right now, let's just put that on the table because I don't have time right now to work on it, but I'm starting. Rhonda Beck has got the banners in here. That was up this year, military banners. She has sent a message to all the people that had them. But nobody wants to pick them up, so they're back here in the back. All they have to do is come in and we'll be more than happy to give them to them. See, the town paid for them. She did not come back with a list on who wanted to enter where, but she said she contacted all the people. And when they get all that, yeah. Okay, storm damage. We did have a, a pretty good storm. We had actually three primary lines out, which was quite a bit for us. Jimmy, Kobe, Terry. Even Jimmy had to come and pull one of our trucks out of the mud.
Got the bill on that too.
Then the next day Kobe and Terry had to clean up all the rest of the mesh. One thing I'd like to say about this, if a tree falls on the power line, I could care less if it's a new power line or it's an old power line. It's still going to break. Absolutely, it's going to break. Some people think if we put new power lines up, the trees won't tear them down. I'm sorry, they need to talk to IPL. So anyway, that being gone, and I did do a safety equipment check on all the trucks and got them all, so everything looking good. Storm, sure, Grant. The mural I noticed is on A and D. Y'all know that. That happened twenty-first of June. That's when it was done. The other thing was get rid of these. I know we talked about on the west end about people running their bicycles across our property up there, the pole yard and going on the trail. That is, I talked to Ryan Lindley. They brought it up to the Parks Department and they're not happy with that, so we'll just leave our poles across there. They're not allowed to do that. Because they don't want another trailhead. Go where you're supposed to do and start it. I don't, not randomly do it. So that being said, we'll just leave it like it is. I don't think there's any other thing to say about it. Okay, the other thing we needed Eric in here for. Now, Ronnie, you want to go to the talk to her about that money?
Oh, what money?
Oh, for the donations? This town, this downtown Revival, I was giving ice cream supplies and we said last year to let you know if you were doing it again.
Whatever. It's for the kids in town.
A thousand dollars.
It's a backpack.
Make a motion for a thousand.
Backpack and.
Backpack school supplies.
School supplies, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
No problem. It's for the kids, you know, what needs to happen. The other thing, the town's got a big problem. It seems like more and more and more people want to come to Coatesville and bring all their junk cars. Maybe I shouldn't use that word, but when I see six or seven of them in a person's backyard and they're all replaced and they're tore apart, they don't run, whatever. We have to do something about this. It has to stop. Have I ever dealt with a county? Absolutely. I get nothing. In thirteen, twelve years, I've got one bunch of cars that was towed. In a week's time, they brought them all back. So what did I gain? Every time I talk about this, it seems to go nowhere. I talked to Bob Gentry the other day about what we want to do, about getting rid of these. Of course, he's all on board and he said he would make sure that people building and planning would be on board with it. But, so the question I had for Eric is if the county's doing it and it's not working. Or at least in twelve years, I've only seen one car ever towed. But it comes down to where your neighbor's got all these cars piled in his yard. And it's, it's not right. Or out on the street.
Well, it devalues other people's property.
And it's, it comes pretty bad when they park them out there and put all their personal trash in there.
Operable, correct. Meaning they don't work, cars.
Cars, as far as I know, they're not. A lot of them are up on jack or the wheels off of them or everything else. But my thing was, my question would be to you, does the town need an ordinance? To take care of this problem? And, you know, I know it's expensive to haul cars away or whatever, then we have an option to lean the property. It's the way I look at it. It's there's, it's gotta be something done. I would not want to put the number on how many we have. I've tried a few times. It's a staggering number. It really is. But I would just love to see, be able to do something that we can do. And there again, I would agree, if anybody ever said, well, you got to treat everybody the same. Have we done that in the past? Not really. No, we have, because we're turning somebody in and nothing happens and it goes on and on. But we have never come in and said we're going to take them all out, treat everybody the same. That's the only way we can do it. Way I'm seeing it. There again, I'd like everything to be legal. I don't want to just go start towing them off and getting trouble.
So I, generally, I think you can pass the ordinance. The question I would have for researchers and we attach, we throw a lane.
On the cooperative.
That's a good question. I mean, generally, I think we can have an ordinance that finds, that essentially finds public nuisance. Or in charge to not utilize and operable license. But then the question is how do we get it first for the expense?
You know, it's, uh.
Well, you know what, if we don't get reimbursed, at least we got the car to that.
Yeah. It's about like the people who's got a house for sale for twelve thousand dollars. And what's next door? You know the story I'm telling?
Oh, yeah.
It's not right. When your neighbors can destroy your value, your property. So.
I don't know what film was done a few years ago, they kinda cleaned the town, it's getting back.
Yeah, and it's the same thing with AMO, they did it one time. And I don't know what they did, they kept rid a lot of them, but then what happens? Comes back, you know?
You know, I asked, I asked Tim Baldwin about it and he said they've got one junk car that he knows in town. And that's on the property that the town bought for a good town park. And they can't do nothing to get. He said he can't think of any. Uh, machine is beautiful, right? Right. Now they gotta, they gotta go on to now, it's just, it's just. It don't quit life hell.
It, it is, and anytime a person thinks it's okay. To put. Seven or eight in their backyard. Come on. It's not right. And then put a tarpaulin up so you can't see them maybe.
That helps.
That was the reason I said I wanted to do an area when you said I couldn't.
I will, I, I don't think you're gonna get to attach anything on the property. That could have been a car, but cars would have cost.
A buck.
But I think. If the town had to pay to have towed away. The town would pay to tow it away.
I mean, you can still assess a fine, like if. Against the property, I mean, state. You know, issue a notice of violation, give them an opportunity to care. When they don't care, then you can, should be able to go in and move them. But then, how you get that money? Well, and we're gonna want, unless they voluntarily comply, we're gonna like them on court order. Giving us the power to, you know, to go in there and do that. So if you're at file the lawsuit, I mean, probably talking. It's gonna be two to three hours, you figure, the first time will take longer, but then after that, it shouldn't be. That, but you're gonna have that time plus eventually here.
What happens if they go get them after they've been towed and try to bring them back?
That would, I mean. Then it would be another fine.
Yeah.
Do it again.
Cause I'm assuming we would just send it, have one of the tow companies come get them, right? And then they would just do their process, assess, I mean, you know, whatever dollars it is per day. And they send names out. So, yeah, they could go get them and bring them back.
We'll get bonded again.
Bond again, do it again. I would, I would. I would say that most of them would never go get them.
Right.
I, I just, they would never go get them. Because they wouldn't wanna pay the expense to go get them.
How, which fine somebody, let's say we find them, hundred dollar in the car, two hundred dollar. They say, I'm not paying, that's what we take in the court.
Yeah, you try to black the judgment against.
Like, okay.
Yeah, you, I mean, under the. Though, the reason why I want for it is thinking, I want the court order to say you can go on the property of the car.
Yeah.
I mean, they just tell you, get it. That, but if they don't.
Yeah.
Then the court order.
Okay.
Yeah. It'd be better for.
Better for the town, I believe. Oh, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
Away you go. Quarter and police officer, law enforcement would be there, the enforcement.
Yep. Whatever.
What kind of time frame do you give them? When somebody blows a motor.
Right, that's, I mean. To me, I mean, you're, we're actually to find what the nuisance or whatever would be, you know, is a. A car that is inoperable and unlicensed for. Six, you know, sixty days, something like.
You know, it's, uh. I think. I would imagine if it, once it started. You had a program that started, you would see it working very fast, without us getting involved.
Yeah, cause. If they were smart, they, they knew that was gonna happen, they could just sell it for junk and save themselves all kinds of money.
Right, yeah.
Cause they're not gonna do anything with it anymore. But, I mean, they're already been sitting there for who knows how long.
Sometimes they don't have title. And it's more of a pain to get a title. Cause most of the places don't take it without title, now you have to tow it away, like you're an ordinance. They don't care if you just tie it up.
Oh, okay.
But if you are trying to sell a vehicle, you know, you can sell it without a title.
Yeah.
So the ordinance is really the best way.
That's what we used to do it. But that's obviously not.
Now, I got ten cars in my backyard, that shows you how much money I have.
Really, I got space back in the field.
But it's, uh. I think it's something we need to seriously work on. We might, we need to show the people. That are really trying to clean it up, instead of just letting it go and making an excuse and, and. You know, as long as I've been here, I don't know how many times it's come up. Like I said. It's ridiculous. And I really. Knocking Danville on. Taking care of this stuff, yes, I am. Do I have a right to? Yes, I do. I've dealt with it a long time. And it seems like when inspectors come out. They really don't want any hassle, so they don't. And. I won't say in other words.
Did you limit this to vehicles or would you include, uh? Would you limit it to vehicles or would you include law mowers too?
Well, we've, we've got, we've got, there again, we've got a major junkyard in town. And we all know it's a junkyard. Now, Eva Trump, when she was in office, turned that over to a town. What's been done? Zero. What's been done? His truck comes in, brings some more in. There's. I would hate to say. Uh, there's no guessing.
I can even guess.
Thousands of more in weeds and trash, there again, people next door.
That's, they've gotten names somewhere.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm just saying.
So do you have to establish a start point? As of. Just say August first. Then you. Sixty days till you go.
Well, you have to get you, you have to get an ordinance done first. Yeah, it would have to be, you have to warn them, and then give them so long, yeah.
You, so let's say you got the ordinance in place five. At August, if you were saying sixty days that you would have for however long, that would start that clock, then you start warning them after that.
I'm gonna give them thirty days. Sixty's too much.
Well, is that one place? Shouldn't it be classified as business?
It's not zoned, it's, no.
So why didn't your family shut him down then?
Well, that's, that's what I mean. And do you know what? They make visits up there. And you know what they told me? Well, he's doing pretty good now. He said, really, he's only got another hundred more.
Well, he put a fence up.
And he's got a barn back there.
Yeah, he goes all the way back.
But that barn was supposed to be tore down. Cause it fell down, it's full of moors.
Coming down on some.
Huh?
It's coming down.
But that's not the point, the point was it was supposed to be tore down.
Well, where, that was a couple of years. Well, his dad is. In the same business and he passed away, he's not.
All, all the stuff in here.
You know, you've got a good rapport with Bob Gentry, calling and telling, I know. Tell me exactly what the county guy told you, the house, house there on the main.
I will definitely do that.
Yeah.
I think our attorney knows it too. Who's the guy with the mowers or Bob Gentry?
I see you taking a mower up there and getting fixed.
Now, it's, I talked to Bob about these cars and. Really, really, really was happy to see something, he said, man, you guys just need to do that.
Yeah, we need to do, we need to.
And I said, yeah, we, we really do need to do it. But we're relying on somebody else and it's failed. I don't wanna say. How do I say that, Ronnie, about? The people. They're poor people. They don't have any money to fix them. So. They're poor, so we just let them violate the law. I don't do that, sorry. It's dumb. But.
Well, they get cash for those vehicles that don't run too.
It's that. That little word being from county inspector. You know? I don't. How like it is. Anyway. So. So. It's an awful, awful thing that made it get during first year. And that's my area photo. So.
What's gonna cost, it's gonna cost town a fair amount of money, yeah, so, yeah. Cause we also didn't figure out what are the typical towing rates and all that because. Ordinance to address that in terms of the fines, cause you don't wanna have a fine that's less than. Or that's less than what the towing company charges.
Yeah. Do you establish a fund for that?
Establish a fund, yes, you have to. Hold on tax rates that they, uh. She had up there, research. But, I mean, specifically, the statute addresses the. The thought. That it's established and said to establish an abandoned vehicle fund.
So. When you.
I think that, I'll do.
What's that?
Do that, do that fund establish, at least it'll start itself.
Yeah, it's. I, I think the. Talking about it is. So, doesn't work. It just don't work.
Your non-reverend fine. Close to be funded from the sale of a vehicle system. With not that way.
So could, could we have Eric send a letter to everybody?
Yep.
Saying that. As of such and such date, we're gonna start forcing it?
And we'll start a campaign, when that comes up?
You got to, you got to. You have to.
I mean, I, I hate to live next door to them, I couldn't imagine looking up everywhere and looking at them, looking.
Uh, it's.
I'm not used to them. Probably buy them, but I'm letting them see it and that's it.
It's. It's not right to do that to your neighbors, which not. I talked to some folks, they were all back and. Guy just deciding to start pulling them in. His neighbor asking. What you gonna do? Well, I'm gonna work on the fix them and sell. Shake them later. The weeds. And. It is. Needs to be looked at. However it takes. So. Just sideways, I weren't thinking, our camera system works. Close to this, yeah. Yeah, it's so nice. Trash bin. Oh. That's my bed.
Me.
No.
The problem.
Yeah, we got one guy on camera a couple of weeks ago. Funny thing is, he was from the lake and he came down Main Street up to the four way here. Through the license plate reader, then went behind the post office and went to the recycle bins, so he just came through there so we could get his license plate, I guess. But I was gonna issue an ordinance violation on it, mail it to him. But turned out when I ran the vehicle plate, it came back to a female, it was a male that was doing the dumping, who borrowed the vehicle. So I couldn't send her, but I did call her. She didn't really wanna give up any names, but she wasn't very happy when she found out the vehicle was used to dump it. But I don't know what you can do in a situation like that, could you, cause of vehicle?
Send it to them, I'm not gonna challenge it.
Yeah.
Soon as they get the fine, they're probably gonna throw them under the bus.
Well, it used to be if you had some license to go through the trash. Actually, the trash, you would be responsible for the trash, they dumped it.
Down the road, yeah.
Yeah, down the road, you got caught.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Still, I'd say the vehicle, I mean.
Yeah, that's what I'd probably do, that's what I was. Assess it, a notice of violation to her.
Well, we can do that in the future, I mean, I've kinda already settled this one, but. Yeah.
You already later doing.
Well, we had a long, she didn't wanna talk to me either, until she found out, you know, who I was, she still didn't wanna talk to me. But then she found out what occurred, she was very willing to talk to me and. Just gonna hang up and call that person and give them a piece of her mind, according to her. She wasn't too happy about it.
Well, how came that?
I told her, so I'm getting ready to issue a violation to you for twenty-five hundred dollars. For this. I realize I know, you know, it's not you that did it, cause it was a male that apparently somebody, she wouldn't even say who I was speaking to. No, he's, 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 no, he's deceased. But the stuff with like cabinetry and stuff, I think she might've had somebody. They would call, came from Kendallville, but I found her name on one thing, but I. I seem like she might've been having some work done, maybe. I don't know, somebody used a vehicle, but.
Like her property.
Yeah.
Her name was on it.
Her name was on one, but it was, all the other boxes was from Kendallville. You and I were looked at, and most were from Kendallville, with a whole different name on it, so I think they were shipping. Yeah, I think it was maybe contractor shipping some stuff.
I think that, well, that gets out and don't take it long, we decided we don't wanna do that.
But I knew the bins were full this morning, I sat out there just over behind the food pantry with the cameras on and what. And, and okay, here comes one, they're shoving it in there, ones they couldn't shove in there, they're taking to their vehicle and leaving.
Yeah.
Others came out with the bags and like checked all the bins and put them back in the vehicle left, I go, damn, nobody's gonna dump anything on the ground, I can't.
Steve, I'm calling, put it over there.
Well, one guy did all that, older gentleman, and then he pulled forward and then he stopped. And he backed up, like he changed his mind, he was gonna leave it.
He saw the camera sign.
Well, no, he, but then he, but then he sat there for fifteen minutes, so I think maybe he just took a phone call or something, then he left, but.
I think the funniest thing, I waved at you the day I did it, I picked up a box.
Yeah.
It was sitting there, I picked the box up, it was for snacks for kids. Uh, you know, somebody. Probably had thought maybe some kid would want this, I think, and not in a dumpster. So I put them in there. I pointed, it's what I did.
You should have given it to Corlene for the Halloween this year. I think they, they come out, haven't they?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, along holiday weekend, I mean.
They do it on Mondays.
Yeah.
By calling there here in twenty minutes.
Yeah, did you call them today?
Yeah, they're.
I sat them till about.
To work with. They really are. And if that stuff's laying on the ground. He gets here, he puts it in the dumpster. You don't ask questions. You'll pick it up. I think, yeah.
Yeah, I was hoping for one this morning, but. I mean, it was nice to see everybody, the things the way they should do it, so.
I think the worst one I ever had was when Reese had it. Somebody dumped a swimming pool liner, one of the big ones. And I said, now what am I gonna do with the swimming pool liner? So I opened that big door on the back. And we shoved it up in there and I closed the door back.
Problem solved.
Problem solved. It was recyclable stuff. Anyway. So we're gonna work on that ordinance? You know, we need to work on it.
They need a motion in a second.
Man.
Good deal.
It, uh.
Expect to take work next week.
You probably need a motion in a second and expedited fee.
How's the fire department? Everything new?
Got you upstairs.
I.
Thresholds and trim.
I went upstairs to review his upstairs and that is really first class nice.
That's good.
That is real nice. That's the way to take care of town building.
Guys did most of the work. The only thing we farmed out was the drywall finishing and the floors. Other than that, we, everybody framed it and we put hung the drywall. We just put the doors in. Um, so you let your, we had the French doors in the end of it now, so. We still put stuff up from the bay to come up there.
Look sharp. It really looked sharp. I started. Uh, it was a joke, but. When the mural thing was out. People were talking about putting it somewhere. I got a little upset, Ronnie, and I said, I put the damn thing on the side of the fire department. But I.
Listen, put one on their fire department.
Yeah, if, if it were. Fire department related. Yeah, that'd be. But. Eric, have you seen him? Here it's down here. This is right up here at the heart of it. All right, anything else?
We got a quarterly report for fire and police department. For the second quarter of patrol work hours was three hundred and two. Training hours was seventy-four, traffic stops were twenty-nine, and calls per service were thirty-three. Well, this, we did that quarter. We did not have any progress or immediate attention. Monthly averages are ninety-nine. Hours. Training hours were sixteen point eight. Traffic stops were seven point six and calls for service. Eleven.
Per month average.
We put in a new ordinance and a thirty-nine is an extra hour.
Just a few. If we can, we need to set in September. Town council meeting. I know it's usually on. And that's for the budget purposes, they're too far here.
So. You gonna stay on the first or?
First liberty.
That's what we always do.
Brass it's the end of the day. I'm fine with the first. I'm fine with the first. You can do the second, but.
First is done.
Probably hear the most of that thing too.
Okay, so. Right now, we got Comcast in town. Jimmy. Believe me, I told him, I personally on the phone, I've shown him stuff. Your property is your business. Now, I'm not gonna give him a right of way. I mean that. I don't know what they can't understand, but that's your address. I gave him your telephone number and your name. And I said, he's easy to work with. He won't give you a hard time, but I can't give you access right away to his property. So anyway. That's, I'll give it to you again. I'll show you.
Okay.
I think I got it right here.
You don't hide it.
Yeah, I think the agreement says that. That is on. Comcast, if they feel like they're within, there's a stat, there's a statute that they potentially could make a claim that they're entitled to the.
Yeah, that's what I told them.
Says eighty-four seventy-seven West County Route five hundred seven. That's Jimmy's. Like all three of them. Well, look at that, you're down.
So I talked to the guy on the land, he called me. So he said he understood. So the next day he sent me the same thing.
You sell it to him, Jimmy.
I'm, I'm old, you can do it, get away with it.
Endeavor use to have to. Make for easy.
Well, he's a. Do you think we ought to put a reef on them? All them for the addition.
Nice, but.
Two hundred and one?
Yeah, that's gonna take. Oh, seventeen.
Good base for that.
Well, they said they do a fundraiser.
Fundraiser. Thirty-four, yeah, forty-four hundred seventeen ball. And it's, they didn't.
That guy, that's a genius that started that re thing cuz he's the only one that.
Celebrates, yeah.
You know, he hasn't made. He did it because they had surplus the first year. Now they're the only company that sells.
They used to, Coachville used to put flags on. And had all the basements separated, whatever, whatever, whatever. And then what happens if you miss one? They missed a few by accident. And so that. Person gets very upset, the family. So that's why I've always just. The bank wanted to do it two years ago, the bank, this time. And wanted to put on the veterans. I said, do you know all of them? No, maybe you knew all of them. Don't do that. It's. So they put the flag up there in the pole and that's supposed to represent all the veterans. That's what it was for. I don't think I'm gonna put a veteran's flag on mine.
Didn't they say they, they'd be able to cover the ones up by the, the eight or whatever it was?
Yeah. It'd be eight briefs, I think. You send them. If they get that way.
Yeah, because that's empty. Steve, you already have. Time capsule. Spot mixed out already.
Uh, talked to Mark. Um, we have kind of a general area, but yeah, right there by the flight pole, so we'll have to, uh. I need you down there with him.
We were gonna sell them at one time and it costs more. To get the survey and everything done. For cremations. Naked. But it costs so much money. We just never been doing it.
We're planning to do the time capsule now, November first to bury.
November third?
Yeah.
But you already got the capsule or?
No, no, we gotta get the funds for the, for the car show. But we did get the stone and the Arabian's gonna be donated. That's, I have got it yet, that's gonna be donated. Um, and I say, I've got a list of names that if people are participating in the time capsule. If anybody wants to participate, like a letter to your counterpart in the future, we're looking fifty years out. I think right now Ryan is the only one's committed from the town board, so. I'm just putting out there. I'm just saying, anybody who wants to can participate. Don't have to. You can. Sent something to Kyle, but he never responded, so I'm guessing he didn't wanna participate.
Well. Eric, you get paid to send one off to your counterpart. Don't charge the town for your time writing that letter. Fifty years in on the move.
Well.
I recommend an abandoned vehicle for a minute.
Yeah, we, we're trying to get these abandoned vehicles out of here. Fifty years from now, they're probably still here, aren't they?
I think it'd be more interesting.
Right over there.
I think it'd be more interesting to open one than to put your stuff in one knowing this is the end right here.
Well, and, and see, that's the other thing we're doing. We're trying to get some of the kids involved, like, like my grandkids, other people's grandkids, or, you know, children. Cuz, you know, like my granddaughter would be six.
Yeah.
Seven at the time. And she could possibly be here, you know, at fifty years from now to see it come out of the ground and. We wanna involve people like that as well, so. We're still getting it all together, but I just, I just wanna bring that up. And if anybody does do a letter. Come, you can come out, come up with it and. But we'll, we'll eventually have to reprint it, put it on archival paper, cuz you gotta seal it a certain way and certain paper, otherwise it'll just disintegrate and won't be.
I've got some hunting pictures, yeah.
Last thing we wanna do is have somebody open up fifty years from now, just comes up watering mud. This has happened.
Years from now, they probably won't have rifles or have something different. Never know. Anyway. Those are the big things that I had in mind is. I think I call it cleaning the town. It needs it. And I'm sure to make some people happy and some people not.
This is a bit of your time capsule.
Yeah. To be opened, uh, July fourth of twenty seventy-five. It's not like a good date.
It's twenty seven.
What's that?
It'd be on seventy-six, it'd be on the three hundred anniversary.
I'll see if they've already started the engraving at the start. We'll just wait it out.
What I wanna give. Is I'll just give you this phone, you put that in there.
I can do that. Well, yeah, we take artifacts too.
When, when we had the alarm people here. Last week. On that particular day, Verizon just decided to give it up. I had to keep texting this lady messages. And Ronnie was calling, I would say, and his phone would just die. It wasn't a good day. So then at one thirty in the morning. And about two thirty in the morning, six o'clock in the morning, the alarm kept, he kept calling me, tell me the alarm wasn't working. It was a good time.
At me at Pittsburgh, I shut the phone off. It's not even, I know where this is going.
I, the second night, it's the first time ever this phone's been off. The second night I couldn't handle it, I just pushed the button, set it off. The next morning, Lily said. Well, why don't we just treat you like residential? I said, you can treat me anywhere you want, but this alarm is not gonna last. She said, we'll just send you a text at eight o'clock in the morning. Your affairs. That's a lot easier. Except that there is a fire, here we don't call. They said that one thing you can't stop. You have to get the phone going.
So no fault insurance. Yeah.
I, uh. I asked the hardware guy, I was joking. You know, I told him I wanted the key.
Yeah.
To the hardware store. So he said, well, I gotta go inside and get it on. You know, I was joking. And then the manager today told me, he said, Jerry, you said something about you wanted a key to hardware store. He said, we have no problem with that. You just come get what you want and write it down. I said, no, we're not gonna do that.
No, no, you don't want that.
No way. You were down there today, weren't you? Oh, you were? I thought. Yeah, he come, I said, I wanted to tell the board tonight when they're gonna open. Anyway, anyway. I said, what'd you do? He said, I didn't know we had to have a sidewalk out the emergency door. I said, well, I know you had to have a concrete strip back there. You didn't have that. He said, now I gotta have it. I said, well. Get started. So that's why he's working on it.
And Jerry be on busted in his town.
We're still alive, so we. We're still alive, so.
Uh, you wanna shut it off? Would you like anything else?
Hey, on August third is LJ's ninety-fifth birthday and he's been in very good health. And he's been able to be at church every Sunday. Um, we're gonna have a special day. He doesn't know about it. Um, his kids know about it. We're trying to get, he worked for the town for a lot, a lot of years and so. Uh, wanted, we wanted, we want as many people as we can to come that day. We're gonna have a special. Some special, uh, presentation for him after the service, gonna have some cake and in, in Felsham Paul. But, um, we're kinda calling unofficially LJ Day. Um, but that, that's his ninety-fifth birthday falls on that day. So we wanna just invite people to look. And then get the word out, you know, and he's got a lot of family in town. And, um.
What's the date? August?
August third. That's a Sunday and falls on his, on his ninety-fifth birthday. But he'll know about it tomorrow as if we had. Well, that's the idea. Is, is to.
If he knows about it, he may not come.
Yeah, that's the thing. He might not come if he knows about it.
Hey, he'll be there.
We got one thing. Our speeders are picking up on seventy-five and they're passing on the double yellow line.
Yeah.
The bank? Yeah. They're watching for it. And then. As I was going into Briarwood the other day with tractor and applicator. Guy went to pass me. He went sideways and I thought she was gonna have to do a report.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
I think the favorite one was Terry seeing it. I assume it. Like T L A, I don't know what you call that motorcycle. That's. That thing, I, I would just love to just know how fast it goes. It's, it's well over a hundred. I mean, when you look at it, we almost can't. And it, and I heard it let off. And believe it or not, that's about the trail, heard it let off and then back on again.
Well, you might have seen people at the trailhead getting already crossed any fibers on them.
I would. It's well over a hundred. It has to be. It, it only does about once a month.
And I think he passed other cars to pass me.
Oh, I'm sure. We do, um. We got to get on seventy-five.
And then. When I come out of Briarwood. I went down to Josh's road. And I had to pick up the trailer. Then they're getting me and I stopped. Looking to make sure, you know, it was clear and I start out, here he is.
Yeah, we got that.
And you return the left, he was the passenger.
Yeah.
Good, the trees.
He wasn't near as close as that other guy. That area, I'm surprised he didn't touch it.
So still win. I mean. I mean. I've been calling every kind of name and work, being out there just doing my job.
I looked, the brake. Then it's not, he went on some.
Was he going north?
He goes south, so.
I have. I, you know, good part about, about that is you do see a lot of brake lights.
Yeah, people are pretty good for the most part.
And you've seen. Wow, a lot of. Triax, you'll, you'll see them really drive down there.
But it's harder and harder to get tickets. I mean, yeah, you get them going through there a few miles over, but. So.
Well, over here, uh, it's, it's not a good sense, right?
Yeah, you get those ones that go through a little like crazy and. So I had a Porsche the other day, I, I had to chase him, finally caught him up here, New Winchester Cemetery. He was going in and out of traffic and.
So, yeah, he had a Porsche.
Well, it was a racing Porsche, probably a three hundred thousand dollar Porsche. And I, I told him, I said, you can't treat seventy five like it's a racetrack. He said, well, actually I just got off the racetrack. You've been racing out of Putnamville.
I would tow the damn car.
And are you all?
I'm not.
Okay, let's end it, Ronnie. Don't do it.